In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 197 entitled "Open Holdings Meetings Act", adequate notice of this board meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in a notice of January 7, 2019. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertised in the Nutley Sun and Starlet on January 17, 2019, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Can we have a stand please for pleasure? We'll call Ms. Kukuzo.
Mrs. Danchen-Martin, here. Mr. De Mayo?
Here.
Mr. Ferraro?
Here.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Here.
Mrs. Ferk?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. Scolera?
Miss Allen?
Here.
Mr. Farnesella?
Here.
Can we have approval in minutes please? Right from motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any correspondence this evening?
No, there's none.
Thank you, Mr. Memora. Okay, we're going to start off with our presentations. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Glazer for the introduction.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here. Pretty excited tonight to finally, I feel like we've had this on the agenda, I don't know how many times, but finally having the opportunity to share with you information on the progress on the district's one-to-one Chromebook initiative. It has been really exciting, but it's also been run on over a period of time and over a period of supervisors. So we're really fortunate tonight to have the former supervisor of Technology, Mr. Joe Dwyer, with us, and our current supervisor of Integrated Instructional Technology, Dr. Jess Shozak, again, finally, every time, to be with us tonight to really talk to us, not just about the progress, but to help the community understand what the vision is for integrating technology into the cooking. So when you're ready, we're ready.
So Dennis, who are you presenting to?
(inaudible)
Oh? Is that okay?
Dennis, who are you presenting to?
I'm eating in a bedding.
And Principal Dennis Williams of Nutley High School is eating in a bedding.
Good evening, board members, and Dr. Glazer, and colleagues, and community members. My name is Jessica Soja. I'm the Coordinator of Integrated Instructional Tech. I'm with Mr. Joe Dwyer, who is our Coordinator of Social Studies, and Mr. Dennis Williams, who's our high school principal. We're excited to present here today our one-to-one Chromebook initiative. We know how important technology is in education and in preparing our students for successful modern careers. Globally, we know that there are emerging technology breakthroughs in a lot of fields, including robotics, genetics, 3D printing, augmented reality, artificial intelligence, and a lot of other STEM-related fields. And when we look at what those fields are asking for in its new recruits, the World Economic Forum has put together a list for us. So in 2020, they expect for new recruits, the top three skills to be complex problem-solving, critical thinking, and creativity. With this in mind, we're thinking, as educators, how can we prepare our students to be ready for this new field and this new emerging workforce? So our vision for one-to-one Chromebooks is to empower our students with readily available resources and information to aid creativity and innovation, to look at inquiry and problem and challenge-based learning, to expand communication, collaboration, support the productivity that they're being asked to do in the classroom, and to make learning more relevant and personal for students. Technology really helps us in all of these areas, and we're also looking at not just creating this as a vision to guide our students, but also training our educators across the district so that they're prepared to teach students. So here we have some images from our library media specialist trainings that have gone on through the year. We've trained them on new typing programs, on coding and robotics. We've trained them on augmented reality and on assistive technologies, and we're starting to see that those are morphing into our media centers. So when we all grew up, we had quiet libraries where we read books and we sat by ourselves, and that's not the spaces that we have for our students anymore today. While we still do have books and we have reading, we also have collaborative areas. We have creativity, critical thinking. We have inquiry-based hands-on projects and computer science principles being mixed in. Through our Chromebook program, we're giving students a device that they can own, that they can take with them from class to class, and that they can really just use in their everyday. So the district still owns the devices, but we've distributed and issued 200, 2,166 Chromebooks, power chargers, and charging cases. So this chart shows the data from each of our grade levels, six through 12, and how many Chromebooks we have distributed. It was a huge undertaking, and I think that we did that pretty well. Scroll to the bottom, you can see our students per building, and we have a lot of Chromebooks out throughout the district. To help us manage that, we thank our parents because they have purchased insurance on an annual basis that we have found is a really important step because a lot of students have damaged their devices. We have 466 damaged devices. We keep track of all of that, and Ms. Russell, who's in our audience today, helps to manage all of that in our high school Help Desk Center for Technology. So for our Chromebook status, we track it throughout the submitted devices or the devices that come to us with an issue. Then we put them out through different companies. So we have HP devices and Dell devices. If it's a warranty issue, it goes through them. We use a company called Security for mechanical issues, and we use GoCare for our breakage issues. So accidental damage from cracked screens and dropped devices is our top issues. We process all of that, and to date, we've closed 277 of those Chromebooks, distribute them back to students. And this is the closed count per building. We've also seen a very few number of intentionally damaged devices, and for those, we ask for the reimbursement from the parents, and they've paid for those devices. To help to communicate our policies for the Chromebook, we have links to the board policies. We also have forms and other documents that are available on our website to share this communication out with parents. And we have created and updated a one-to-one Chromebook handbook for students and parents that will be adopted for next school year, and that will really help to give guidance as to proper care of the Chromebooks and to what we expect in terms of usage of the Chromebooks, the fees, and the annual insurance, and even getting started with the device and then turning it back in once they graduate. Why we're doing all of this? Because we really know how important it is to integrate technology into our curriculum, and having our students with the devices that they carry allows them this opportunity to consistently use it in a way that best meets their educational needs. We look at this through the lens of the SAMR model, which is a four-phase integration model developed by Dr. Ruben Frantodora. It looks at the most basic ways of integrating technology as substitution. So what you would normally do with paper and pen, doing the same task but with technology instead. That's just the surface level of what technology can do for students. As we get deeper into the model, we look at redefining the task itself. So we see projects where they are Skyping in their science class in middle school with our elementary school students. We see podcasting. We see video creation, and we see more student voice and choice when they have this device that they can use for their education. Joe?
So I'm going to share a little bit, just provide a little bit of a window into how some of our teachers are using the technology in their classrooms. One more time, I'm Joe Dwyer. I'm our district social studies coordinator, and from February to July of last year, I was kind of doing the role currently held by Jess, and helping to kind of get our Chromebook program off the ground with a lot of support from the board, the community, and our teachers and administrators. So I think we're excited about where we are, and we're excited about some of the things our teachers are doing in the classroom. This is a Google site, which I'm sure we'll be able to share with you, so some of the images might not be perfect as you see them projected, but one of the things that was talked about earlier was using the technology to allow for complex problem-solving and for students to express their own creativity. So this is a fifth-grade unit on human-environment interaction. So basically, it's an exploration by students about how humans modify their environment and what the ramifications of that might be. So we're having our fifth graders engaging in that kind of conversation, which I think is a good level for a fifth-grade student. I think it's appropriately challenging for them. So if we were to do something like that without the technology, we would give them some pictures, use a textbook, maybe show them a video. But with the technology, students are able to definitely do a lot more in terms of engaging with one another, engaging with their teacher, and also having an opportunity to manipulate. So Dr. Shozak talked about modification. I think you'll see a little bit of that in this unit. So it starts with inquiry question where students have to go through some exploration. They have to solve a complex problem about human-environment interaction and what the fallout of this is. We engage students with some images where they have to kind of watch a time-lapse video of the change to Manhattan Island. So it starts very rural, it's forested, you eventually see buildings take over. They kind of talk about what the positives and negatives of that are, so looking at the pros and cons. They're doing this collaboratively with their peers. They're able to kind of share and see what one another is, coming to a conclusion as it relates to pros and cons, kind of compare notes that way. The technology definitely enhances students' ability to compare notes there. One of the things that I thought was most interesting about this assignment, it's reflected in just an eight-second video where you kind of see what's happening on student screens, is they were exploring different types of land usage: commercial, residential, recreational. And we first started by just showing them images of what this looked like from stock photos. Oh, here's a picture of a park. What kind of land usage is this? But then we had students access Google Maps. We had them go to Nutley, go to their community. We said, hey, in Nutley, find an example of residential land usage. Oh, we're suburban community, there's a lot of residential homes. That was easy. Find an example of commercial land usage. We have some great businesses. So they were taking screenshots of the business, and they were copying it into a document, and that's what you see students doing here. So in the same moment that they're exploring some social studies content, they're manipulating maps, they're selecting pieces of those maps, and they're also learning a technological skill of being able to take that screenshot, which most of our fifth graders, up until this point, were unaware of. So this is kind of a multi-layered instructional opportunity for students. And then, you know, this was not the culminating activity of the unit. It eventually culminated with students watching the video of the destruction of the Tappan Zee Bridge, which was, it's very relevant. It was in the news very recently. It was a big spectacle. So students were able to kind of comment on, you know, prior to that, they were sinking parts of the Tappan Zee Bridge into the river as artificial reefs. How do we feel about this? What is the benefits? What is the drawbacks? And then eventually also talking about how human-environment interaction is impacting Nutley. So I think a lot of parts of this unit would not have been possible if it were not for the devices and kind of what's at students' fingertips because of those devices and what they're able to learn because of the greater lengths they're going to go to with those devices. So again, it's just a small window. It's one unit. It's one class. These things are being replicated time over, I would say, in our other grade levels, and I'm sure in other content areas as well.
I guess it will transition to me, John.
Sure.
Well, I'd just like to circle back on the vision part, and I think it's important for us to articulate this in public. I was talking to my dad in his capacity back in 1980. My dad visited, as a Nutley board member, the 100 and Central School District for their computer technology setup and brought it back here. So this is a continuation for all of us in Nutley to provide what's best for our students, right? I think it's something worthwhile. It's not easy, but it's something very, very worthwhile, and I am just really happy we've made this huge lift, and I hope we can sustain it. I'd really like to thank Joe and Jess, Ian, Dave Steiner, and Gina Russell for the yeoman effort they're putting forth with this. You know, we're norming a lot of this right now in our building. And anybody who has a teenager, you know, the more expensive the device, the more they're going to leave it underneath the couch or, you know, in someone's car. So we're norming out those behaviors on how to use it. But in over the 70 observations I've done, three-quarters of the observations I've done, I've seen really effective use in English classrooms. I've seen really effective use in science classrooms. Social studies is pretty much leading the charge in our building. There are definitely some areas which we need to norm out and figure out how we want to do this. So it's a very exciting time as we norm through this. So, you know, we have a vision. We'd like to sustain that vision. The one piece I would like to bring up here is equity. You may hear that term a lot, but what I'd like now is that we're providing our students across the socioeconomic spectrum equity to the digital access, which, you know, you may or may not think about that in Nutley, but we have that issue. So now everyone has fair and equal access to what everybody at this point now thinks is everybody has. But in some of our homes and our apartments in town, that is not the case. But we know now, while they're in our building, these students are now have access through the Google Classroom, through their sites, to be a digital citizen, and that's where it's going, folks. That's where it's been going for a couple of years now. I'll leave it at a final plea piece. As we come through this, I just want everybody to realize that in our vision, as I talk to Joe and Jess, and Ken, and our coordinators and our teachers, we are not losing focus on the human element. Bill Gates just put an article out in Forbes on what the next changes will be, and he kind of denigrated the printed book, and I had to take a little, take Mr. Gates' task a little bit on the printed book. There will always be a need for human interaction. We're never going to lose sight of the book. Real learning, real feedback given in real time. This is a platform to help students, but it is not the replacement for the teacher. It is not the replacement for human interaction. So I just wanted to put that into our presentation. Thank you.
Dennis White, please.
Oh, sure.
So, thank you, all, three of you. I know this is a lot of work. You have no idea from this brief presentation how big of a lift this actually is and what kind of an effort is involved. Jess, how many Chromebooks did you give out on your first day?
Dennis was with me for that one, and close to 400.
400 in one day to students. And we have how many, 1,200 about, just at the high school?
2,166 in total.
And you're looking at the sum total of staff that manages that, including Gina Russell sitting up there. So thank you. It is a really powerful piece of the strategic plan, not the current strategic plan either, the one that was completed before my time, before Jess's time, even Joe's time, unless you count when you're a teacher. The idea that we can continue to help our students with experiential learning, problem-based learning, task-based learning, to be able to up the rigor of our curriculum instruction and assessment, to be able to provide the opportunities, as Mr. Williams said, for all students, equity for every student in this district, all 4,100 students, to be able to have those experiential, problem-based, task-based opportunities has been tremendous, and it makes a difference to our overall education program. As Mr. Williams also said, it takes a lot to support that. It takes a huge commitment to be able to keep an eye on the prize, if you will. There will still be media centers. There'll always be books. I'm still one of those people who goes into a bookstore and buys a book and dog ears pages. Actually, I was recently challenged on Twitter to list my favorite books, and I think you'll see that they're all classic books from my childhood. The idea that we have blended education, you know, we talk about that a lot. They're using money. Students can go online and take courses. They can take AP courses that we don't offer in district online. That blended education does not take away from our district curriculum instruction and assessment, and I think that as we continue on with the strategic plan, as we continue on with a vision for curriculum instruction and assessment, you're only going to see more and more really exciting and interesting things, and I hope you'll share my pride in what this small, hugely dedicated group, including Kent and Janine, our Directors of Curriculum, and honestly, all of the teachers and our leadership team have bought into to make sure that this happens. So thank you, and thanks for your patience in getting this presentation finally out there. Thanks, everybody.
Mr. President, if I could.
Yes, I was just going to thank them.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to thank you all. I know that from the onset, when I was first a board member, this was just starting to roll out, so to see the progress that's been made has been amazing. The kids love it. Our little guy, you know, and he's good, and makes sure he plugs it in every night. He does what he's supposed to do. He looks at it, makes sure there's no scratches, no dents, no things, no stickers, none of that, and he's ready for the next day at school. So it's been really, really good from start to finish so far with the rollout and what the expectation is. So I really appreciate it, and thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, same thing. I certainly appreciate what you've done for our children and the benefits sometimes of being a board member and knowing you were part of this program coming forward, and then to see, in Danny's case, his son, in my case, my grandson, from Spring Garden School, who just cherishes the Chromebook. I mean, it's his. How you can't touch it, but I can show you this, how I can show you that. Okay, show it to me. And it's just exciting to know that I was part of that. In my case, it's a little different because I was part of Lou Williams. When Lou Williams was on the Board of Education back in the 80s, I served with him, and I remember him back then being ahead of the curve. So it's just rewarding to be here as a parent, certainly as a board member, and I appreciate the work the teachers and everyone is doing for our children. Thank you.
Open up to any other board members. Do they have any other further comments? Thank you again.
Okay, we're going to the next part of our meeting here. There is no president's report this evening. We're going to turn it over to Dr. Julie Glazer for our superintendent's report.
So again, good evening. Thanks. Welcome back from break. I hope everybody had a nice, enjoyable, relaxing time. I was very fortunate to be at the Association of Superintendents National Conference on Education. It was a tremendous opportunity to learn with my colleagues, but also to share Nutley's experiences with a national audience. We are highlighted in National CEO Magazine, and the work that we've been doing around safety and security and telling our story as far as facilities and infrastructure is what, in particular, is highlighted. While we've been gone, I have to say, it's been far from quiet in the district while the staff and students have been gone. We've had emergency plumbing work being completed in the locker rooms at Voice Locker Room at Nutley High School, and at Washington School. The secure entrances at John Walker Middle School and Washington School are being completed. We had an early dismissal due to weather. Our vendor is continuing with the carburetor installation at each school to facilitate bathroom key door security. We already have 12 vendors who have applied in response to the request for proposals for security monitors. And in addition, we've been able to complete the revised memorandum agreement with the Nutley Police Department for 2019-20. We have filed that with the county, and it's pretty exciting to do that. As we've done at Nutley High School, we will be introducing permitted and non-permitted items for events here at the middle school, the same way we have the plastic signs at the high school. We've now gotten them for the middle school and actually for all the elementary schools. We'll continue to share the lists with the community, and we do thank our PTO, our athletic and community partners, including the Liquid Church, for supporting this effort and for making sure that the efforts that we've put into place are implemented with fidelity. You may notice that Business Administrator Karen Yeamans is not in her place at the table tonight. We're proud to tell you that she's being named tonight and honored in October by the Columbia State Parade Committee as the 2019 Community Excellence Award winner. Couldn't be happier for her. We're proud of her, and honestly, just very pleased that her efforts are being recognized. Additionally, we have congratulations to our high school winter guard with their first-place finish, and the high school indoor percussion with their second-place finish at the woodbridge competition. Our Nutley-Columbia Hockey Co-op won its first-round game in the state hockey tournament last week, 3-2 against West Windsor Plains Spirit Borough. Unfortunately, they were not able to pull it out against Montclair, but it was still an exciting 5-4 finish and amazing effort and season. Upcoming in the district, we started kindergarten registration tonight, kicked off with a line out the door, down the block. A little scary thinking about that, but pleased that everybody is ready for next year already. This is also Read Across America Week, the celebration and birthday of Dr. Seuss. I know I am. I know many of our board members are. Our community members are looking forward to being in the schools this week and reading to our students. I hope you'll take the opportunity to also read to your children, not just Dr. Seuss, but any book. Reading time together is very special. Also, we have Newsies the Musical. You can hear all of the sets rolling around upstairs. They will be here at the middle school for the musical this year, Thursday, March 7th, Friday, March 8th, and Saturday, March 9th. Additionally, the Academic Booster Science Fair have their deadline, March 8th. The actual science fair will be March 16th. Always exciting. Our next Board of Education meeting is Monday, March 18th. At that time, we're going to have a public presentation by the demographer, Ross Haber. We'll also have an introduction to the preliminary 2019-2020 budget and budget preparation. Thank you for being with us tonight, and as always, for your active participation.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. We're going to turn it over to our board secretary, our assistant board secretary, Mr. John Memora.
Thank you, Mr. President. Work has begun to spruce up the weight room in the high school. A new sheet rock was put up this weekend, and over the next two weeks, there will be spackling and painting. The boiler project at Rackliff School has been completed, and on tonight's agenda, there's a resolution for a refund of $18,597 per unused funds that reduces the overall cost of the project. And finally, the budget process is moving along full steam ahead. Business Administrator Karen Yeamans and myself have been meeting with district administration to aid in the planning process. We're also waiting for the Governor's Address in March, which will follow with our state aid allocations. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Memora. Our student representative is not available this evening, so we're going to move over to our committee reports. We only have one this meeting, because we did other two at the prior meeting, so the only one today is with Mr. Ferraro on finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, February 19. At the meeting, Mr. Nicolet discussed the state of training for the new boys at Rackliff School that took place on February 21st. He also updated the board on recent plumbing issues at Washington School and the high school. He advised the committee that he was able to secure trees that were used in the holiday display that will be placed along the field perimeter at Washington School. Mr. Nicolet also updated the committee on the plasterwork that's happening at the high school. Chantel Brown updated the committee on heating conditions throughout the district and the annual servicing of unit vents and air handlers, which are taking place, which took place last week in the classrooms throughout the district. Ms. Yeamans and Mr. Memora reviewed the tonight's finance resolutions, including budgetary transfers. The committee continued to review the 2019-2020 preliminary budget. Ms. Yeamans provided a budget breakdown by department and some of the program needs for next year. The state aid allocations are expected after the Governor's March 5 budget address, and the committee continued to discuss requests for proposals that will be issued this spring. Our next meeting is Tuesday, March 12th.
Thank you, Mr. Ferraro. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board in this section. We allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulation, six of one, allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak at once only after others wishing to speak on a topic has been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign with Mrs. Kukuzo before you take the microphone. Will the first person wishing to be heard please step forward?
Okay. Donna from Rockville, 34 Roosevelt Street. My question is for number three. On the agreement of law enforcement officials, last night, when I was looking through the agenda, it's being resolved in accordance. First of all, I couldn't find the law anywhere. When I was looking for it, I was wondering if there happened to be a wrong number, because the board approves the memorandum of agreement and agenda, addendum between education and local and county law enforcement officials. And I'd like to know what was changed, because last night on the website, it was unarmed personnel, unarmed security guards.
So, yeah, no, I was going to say, so on the website, you're talking about the existing memorandum?
Uh huh.
That was visible?
Yes.
Okay. So did we not update the?
So, we changed.
Yeah.
So, in answer to your question, that is the memorandum of agreement for 1819. The new memorandum doesn't go into effect until the county approves it. As I said, we rewritten ours. It's been submitted to the county, and when it gets county approval, then 1920 will replace that 1819 on the website. So what's changed? There's actually a couple of laws that have changed, and they may have, so we get a template from the state that we fill in. So they may have missed a number, but we can check that and make sure. But what's changed since last year, and we had already put this in place prior to the law, there's a requirement for video streaming into the buildings for security with the police. Again, we had already done that, so that's not a change to our memorandum. And prior to this year, we only had Natty Ferrera as our director of security. We have made that, he's continued in that role. We've added our safe schools officers. We've made Gene Boyle the registrar. Natty remains the liaison to the police. So that is also not a change in our memorandum, even though our staffing has changed. And the other piece of the law that changed is in training for the school resource officers, whether they're armed or unarmed. And we've already, ours have already completed that training as well, prior to the new memorandum.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
No, you're right. It's a great question.
Coming in unarmed and?
Yeah. It just has, until the county gives us, we'll get, so we have this resolution tonight. We submit that resolution to the county to support our memorandum of agreement, and then they'll send us back a letter telling us that the memorandum, the new memorandum of agreement's in force.
Okay. And then I do have one other question. The approval of the property line thing, what exactly is that? On 20th January, like, the people have to sign point of view.
It doesn't matter.
John, do you? I'll do it. So this is a crazy, weird, there's like this tiny little thing that shows up on somebody's title when they bought a house. It's like a, like this big, that supposedly we owned from a million years ago, and they were not able to get clear title unless we conceded this square of property we conceded.
Oh, okay. They could buy a house and?
No.
It's rare conceded. It's not even, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Sure.
Anyone else wishing to address the board on resolution items only for this evening? Okay, seeing none. Can we have Lisa Dancheck-Martin for our record?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move back to the addendum. Resolutions one and two is written.
Second.
Discussion? Local?
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin? Yes. Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Arum?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes. Mr. Kozinski, would you take administration, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I knew the administration resolutions, one, two, three.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President, my question sort of follows up with what Mrs. Ferrara asked. I'm not sure if we're talking about two different situations. She asked about something she saw on the website referring to an RFP that was put out. Am I correct in assuming that? You're talking about?
Yeah, I'm discussing that unarmed.
So that RFP, that's, has it gone out or it's going out or?
Okay, because I already said that's not what?
So my question is, is that part of this memorandum agreement?
No.
Because I almost thought that you were explaining that it was part of it, but not approved yet.
It's not part of it.
Okay.
Are you clear on that, Mrs. Ferrara? I just want to make sure.
Yeah. I was going to say.
Okay, okay. So you were referring to the RFP that was put out or this particular piece of language in the?
The piece of language that was written in.
Okay. So you're referring to the fact that what we have online is not corresponding? Okay. So it was not with regard to the, with the? Okay. Local, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Arum?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes. Mr. Ferrara, would you take finance, please?
Mr. President, I agree with resolutions one through eleven.
Second.
Discussion? Local?
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
I vote yes on all except I abstain on number five.
Okay. Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Arum?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes. Mr. Riley, would you take personnel, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move our personnel resolution, as should I show me?
Second. Discussion? Local?
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Arum?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes. Ms. Dancheck-Martin, would you take policy, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move policy. Resolution number one is written.
Second. Discussion? Local?
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
I abstain.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Arum?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes. Ms. Dancheck-Martin, would you take policy, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move policy. Resolution number one is written.
Second. Discussion? Local?
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
I abstain.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Arum?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulation allot 30 minutes for this communication. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, as we ask you to stay within the requirements. As I stated earlier, all statements fully directed to me as the chairperson, no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign with Mrs. Kukuzza before you take the microphone. Will the first person wishing to be heard please step forward? Seeing none.